Hey everyone, it's morning. To direct the superintendent of schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer to each party listed here in. The sum set against each name contained in school payable menu PR girls. Number twenty-three dash fifteen in the amount of five thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. Main portal is number twenty-three dash sixteen in the amount of thirty thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty cents. And many prayers number twenty-three seventeen, the amount of two hundred and six dollars and seventy-nine cents on December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Number twenty-three dash thirteen, the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixteen cents. And number twenty-three dash thirteen dash two in the amount of two hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy cents. Number twenty-three thirteen D in the amount of thirty-seven thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and forty-two cents. And number twenty-three thirteen D in the amount of twenty-three dollars and seventy cents on December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Number twenty-three dash fourteen, the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. Number twenty-three dash fourteen dash two in the amount of one thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-two cents. And number twenty-three fourteen D in the amount of thirty-four thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents on January fifth, two thousand twenty-three. And main person number twenty-three dash eighteen in the amount of twenty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. Many prayers number twenty-three nineteen in the amount of six thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. Many prayers twenty twenty twenty-three dash twenty in the amount of two hundred and six thousand seventy-nine dollars. I'm sorry, two hundred and six dollars and seventy-nine cents. Twenty-three fifteen in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. And twenty-three fifteen D in the amount of thirty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-seven eighty-two dollars and seven cents on January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
I got a motion in the second, was there any errors in that?
Can I ask him to repeat those, please?
Okay, no discussion, all of favor. Five oh.
Who was the second on that?
Either did work, see, and just spread down. We have a motion for the paper award.
And it is moved to direct the superintendent of schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer to each party listed herein. And some set against each name contained in school payable warrant. S A twenty-three dash ten student accounts. In the amount of seventeen thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. Twenty-three dash twenty-three in the amount of five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. Number twenty-three dash twenty-four in the amount of thirty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. And twenty-three dash twenty-five, the amount of ninety-one thousand four hundred and ninety dollars and twelve cents on December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Scholarships twenty-three dash three in the amount of ten thousand dollars. And S A twenty-three dash eleven, the amount of two thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-six cents student accounts. And twenty-three dash twenty-six in the amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand seventy-three dollars and thirty cents on January fifth, two thousand twenty-three. And scholarships twenty-three dash four in the amount of thirteen thousand three hundred. Thirteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars scholarships twenty-three dash five, the amount of twelve thousand dollars. S A twenty-three dash twelve student accounts in the amount of sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirteen cents. Twenty-three dash twenty-seven, the amount of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-three cents. Twenty-three twenty-eight in the amount of sixty-seven thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and five cents on January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Thank you, John. If not, all in favor? My vote. First reading of the policies.
I move to approve first reading of the following policies. BBA B school board self-evaluation and new one. BBA board member qualifications to new policy. BBBE unexpired term fulfillment vacancies, new one. ECB conflict of interest is to revise. BCC nepotism is revised. BDA board organizational meeting is new. BDB board offices is revised. BDD board superintendent relationships. Relationship is revised. BDE board standing committees is revised. BDE dash R standing committee operating procedures is a new one. BDF as board advisory committees, which is revised.
A second.
Well, I don't, where's the first reading? I don't think we need a motion and a second.
I think we do.
Yeah, we confirmed that last time.
Never used to be that way.
Yeah, it's not immediate. Okay, any discussion on that? All approving the first reading. Five oh. Now. We approve the first reading of the policies. Like BBAB, do we go? Through them again? Do we have to have another motion on those?
That was the motion below, move for. That was, that was the motion.
That's the motion for this being new to everybody.
Once they were.
And then you turn the page and you'll have the motion to adopt. The policies that we approved for the first read last time.
Okay. We need a motion to approve the following list of policies.
We're going on to the next policy, right? I'd like to make a motion to adopt the following list of policies. AC non-discrimination equal opportunity and affirmative action revised. ACA gender neutral language new. ACA harassment and sexual harassment of students revised. ACA dash R student discrimination harassment. And Title IX sexual harassment complaint procedures revised. ACAB harassment and sexual harassment of school employees revised. ACAB dash R employee discrimination harassment and Title IX sexual harassment can. Complaint procedures revised. AC dash R grievance procedure for persons with disabilities revised and replace I H B A L. ADAA school. School system commitment to standards for ethical responsible behavior revised. ABC tobacco-free schools use possession of tobacco and electronic smoking devices revised. BE school board meeting revised. GCG substitute and to the pay revised second.
Any discussion?
I have one request. If we get. Big files, these are fifty-four pages and something, is something we can get that sent to our house instead of. I can print some stuff off, but to print off a hundred pages. There's something that we could. The cam used to drop them off in our mailbox. Just, just when it's huge files like that.
Yeah, I have a paper copy I got and it's, it's that big.
Yeah.
And it's, I just like, I'm old school and I got this paper in front of me, Kevin.
Yeah.
You know, I can read off computer by.
I look at it on the computer because I can actually.
Yeah.
So I can see it.
Just when it's real big files like that, you know. Thirty or forty pages, all right, but a hundred and fifty pages.
These policies are a lot more than a hundred and fifty pages.
Any other discussions? All in favor? Four. One votes no. Or one zero. Notification of new virus.
Kevin Goderson, title one at that three student support step eight. Nineteen dollars and twenty cents an hour tied on January third, two thousand twenty-three. Kyle Collins, food service assistant at Granite Street, step six. Thirteen eighty an hour hired on January fourth, two thousand twenty-three. John C. Bushard. Food service assistant, three hours a day paid through Ursa three grant step nine, fourteen forty. An hour hired on January fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Quick question. When is that? I know we were short some text, how close are we to being? Fully staffed.
Um, I think we're getting, we're getting much closer. We have one. Or, or this was the end.
I think this was the.
I think this was the end too.
We, we have one that we're looking at for three J.
Okay, all right, so one. This food assistant one too is flexible, that's why it's three hours. Um, so Mia was having some struggles in the kitchen to get enough people with people being out sick and for various reasons. So this is a floater to help with prep and serving and, and all of that. And so far, so good. It hasn't been very much time, but it has helped us out with some of the sickness.
And Kevin, the first two are actually replacements. We had two people give.
Okay.
They were new positions.
So we still have a few openings.
At one.
One. Also speech teacher in how old T is, that's the last two, right?
And all the special.
Special at a grant.
So we're still out.
There's no, so I especially like to hear again until.
Any other discussion?
Probably asked this question before. I'm asking again. How do we figure what step there? They're, they're brand new employee to this system. Are they starting this time eight?
Uh, I'd base it off of years of experience, you know, resume.
Okay.
And it's mostly years of experience in the field. Right. So it can't be years of experience just in anything. There has to be some skill set that's related to the position that they're filling.
Okay, follow up to that. On the food assistant, step six is thirteen eighty an hour, thirteen eighty an hour is minimum weight, correct?
The steps will be altered. Uh, this coming, okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's a great question. We'll try and improve on that.
Anybody got anything else? Student representative reports. Grayson is in basketball practice. So she's excused. Sydney. You didn't have a report. Okay. Your excuse, and I mean it's been. Long week. Administrative reports.
Michelle is out this afternoon, but I will say on her behalf, you can read what she wrote, but. On her behalf, she also had held a meeting. Um, and there were about twelve, thirteen people in attendance. There were people from the town council, from the school, from the school board and some folks from right in our own system. To kind of take a pulse on how the international program was going, direction we might want to go if it was time to go straight or zig or zag. Um, so she ran a really nice meeting on that and we got some good input to give us some direction.
Any questions, Kevin?
Will you, will you be sharing what direction we're gonna go or?
Yeah, um, that's it. Yeah, sure. Um, Michelle will be working on, um, there was. One thing that they were talking about is offering some information to potential host families. Like the understanding that, oh, well, you'd be a host family, but then a host family being hesitant because they don't really know all that that encompasses. And so she's going to be putting together like some a resource list, like here's a little pamphlet to show what it looks like to be a host family. Um, there was conversation about maybe having like, um, a get-together, maybe like a half an hour, you know, we'll sort of cookies or something. And inviting people to come in and just like talk to people who have been host families. Um, because right now the biggest challenge is host families. Um, we could have had ten students with us this year, but we couldn't find hosting. So that was a really great suggestion. Uh, the pamphlet was a suggestion, the meeting was a suggestion, um, and then. Uh, doing like some advertising, like being proactive on how we would advertise to increase the attendance at the program. Short video, yeah.
Yeah, was the group that was there supportive of continuing?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, could, yeah, supportive of continuing, but helping, um. Michelle and myself to kind of take a little bit different view, like sometimes you get this tunnel vision and it is what it's always been. And then COVID hit, so we just wanted to take a pulse. Do you want us to go in a little bit different direction? Do we want to have some program, you know, like kind of to get a more broad perspective on the international program? I think we had a great meeting.
Yeah, I didn't think.
Yeah.
We sure sweet.
I think it's so good to keep. Keep that contact with the town council. I think that's going to solve a lot of problems down the road.
Yeah, there was.
Give and take and add. Get some input from them too. I guess great idea.
Yeah.
And it's great, and it's great to see it once or before. I like this from all of the administrative, not just.
Yeah, no, she did it. She did a really good job.
Katie's on. I don't believe we can still. Hear anything that. That they say we all got the reports. From everybody. Is there anything anybody would like to say about? Katie's report.
It's wonderful that, um, the Melman Grant, something that she worked on along with some colleagues and other staff members. And they really have some great plans going forward to use that funding to support our, our students. Uh, to talk about careers and paths and exploration of opportunities that they might like to go on. Should be very exciting.
Or do have a question. It's going back to seeing that we were paying out scholarships. How long does a scholarship stay? With the person, so if somebody graduates, do they have to use it within a certain amount of time? What happens if it's, you know, four or five years down the road before they decide to go to school? How long does that scholarship stay with the person?
Most scholarships have their own guidelines, so there's not a single answer to that. Some will have to be immediate, like you have to be a traditional student. And then there's another handful of scholarships that would allow to support a non-traditional student. But. We really have to be specific on what scholarship you're, you're thinking about. Um, and some of the scholarships are family supported, so like if you needed to have an exception, if something happened in your world and you couldn't attend. Your first fall semester, then maybe it would hold over to the spring, but those conversations would happen, you know, between the receiver and the provider.
And so it's nothing specific, it's just.
It isn't.
I work with some youth that, that graduated, didn't go to school, so.
Yeah.
Here's another.
Yeah, so for working with youth like that, there are scholarships out there to help support them. Um, they're just a little bit different than those that are handed out here.
We got some buzzles. Report.
So Sue is not here this evening and she and I spent some time together, um, talking about, um, seniors, like how you folks are deciding where you're going. And once we got going, we were just both excited about student opportunities. Um, so you're going to see that, um, she thought she didn't have a lot to, um, provide for you, but in looking at this, once we got talking, she. I think realized and represented very well the opportunities that are offered to our middle school and high school students here. Um, while I was talking with her, a student came in who was just excited about having gotten an A in, um, her, um, psychology class. And she's like, oh, and I'm like, that's why we're here. We're here to see all of our students succeed in whatever program it is. Um, we talked about the, the trio program, uh, this being an SAT, um, testing site. Uh, so this is, this is for you. There's more here than you want me to say, but this is the type of stuff to help you get a sense on what's happening here in the middle of the school.
Anybody have any questions on her report?
I, I don't, but I missed on Katie's report. I wanted, I wanted to say. I was glad to see these four, these four bullet points. Uh, these are all things that we have done in the past and who kind of gone away. I'm really excited to see that those are coming back.
Yeah.
The, uh, the career affairs and, and being able to do the, the college scores and some of that stuff.
Yeah, that is very.
That's very exciting.
It is every.
We have Mia's food service manager report.
Yes.
Okay, I'll give you a break. Um, as mentioned, we have two new hires for our food service team, Kyle Collins and John Sharp, both doing a great job fitting in well. Um, both very experienced in food service, so they bring a lot to the team. Very valuable to us. Um, John's position is paid for with grant monies. So, um, that line was designated for subs. We have a very limited sub pool for our department. So he was brought on to, you know, have an extra staff person on site so he can step into other roles where needed. Um, and that has already been quite the saving grace even over the last week and a half that he's been here. Um, at the end of November, we had our state of need administrative review, um, during Christmas break, we spent some time. Um, going through different steps we need to take to kind of complete that process and move it forward. It's still, um. A lengthy process, so I can't imagine when it's going to be done before spring, but at this point we're up to date where we need to be and we're just waiting for. Um, more direction from the state itself. Um, in December, we did start to offer just a single entree choice on our menus to help. But the food costs, food costs are just. Increasing and increasing and increasing with no real end in sight, it seems. So being able to offer one good option to our students doesn't seem to have any effect on our numbers. Students and staff. Yeah, seem pretty happy. I have not had any complaints. From twelve six to one thirteen, our team served five thousand three hundred and sixty-eight breakfasts and five thousand four hundred and thirty lunches. It's a really not a real big change at all, which is really great to see. And lastly, our department received twelve thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-one cents in the second round of supply chain. This is supply chain assistance funds. Um, and these funds are provided to help offset the additional expenses that the supply chain disruptions cost within the program. So that is hugely beneficial for us at this point in time and there will be a third coming, not as sizable. As this one, but, um, another coming, so. Big bonus for us.
Any questions of me before she says so, Kevin?
We're talking about the cost of food stuff. Are we going to come in at a deficit? What we budgeted for? The food and stuff.
It's, it's a possibility. There's a significant increase from last fall to, um, this fall.
We need to just wait until that happens and just transfer funds? Is that what happens, Charlie?
That's an enterprise account outside of our channel.
The, the town has that right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll do what I can, you know, to keep costs down, but it is us.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm actively keeping an eye on it, I'll tell you that.
Thank you, Mia.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions? Cody report.
Cody is not here this evening, so he does have some things for you to read.
Has a timeline and when the. Spice works is going to be up and running.
I can check that out for you though. And I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
We're actually talking about another system as well, so it may not be that, but.
We have a meeting. On Thursday.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, we can just wait for them, can't we?
See no more questions, Louis?
So Christmas break was our first and, uh. Biggest chance since the beginning of school to get back in all the classrooms and usually we go in and do a de cleaning and sanitization of all the rooms and. Um. It was challenging this year, certainly. It was a lot fewer days on Christmas break than it had been in the past and you know typically we had. Two weeks solid to, to get in and do that work and we had. A little bit of sickness this year without some of our staff and, uh. Uh, we used to hire extra staff for those things, so. I think that the, the crew that did go in and, and, and we were able to get into all the rooms and sanitize and, and, you know, hopefully combat some of the. Flus and viruses that are going around, so I think the guys did some, some good work there. Um, we also hosted an additional two movie nights at the gym. Um, with the, with the town, um, seemed to be doing quite well with that. Uh, basketball season, of course, is a busy one for us again. That's something where, you know, in years past, we hired, uh, you know, that was additional overtime for custodians to clean up after games. And, you know, that work is now all left until the next day. Um, to be addressed then, and you take a day like today, the gym was used multiple times over the weekend. And, uh, and then we get a storm to deal with, the gym hasn't been touched. Um, it's a lot of extra work on our, on our, on our staff that, you know, never used to be there, so. Just, I think they do a great job. I think we all do a great job pitching in and doing what we have to do to. To keep it clean and get it ready for school in the mornings. Uh, making progress on the server room at Granite Street, we're. Moving the server room during, due to heat issues, overheating issues. I've got the electrical done and. Partial network cabling is done. I've got to do the fiber optic line this week, um, and get the rest of the shelving installed, so. If Mother Nature cooperates, which it looks like she will, I'll have some more time to devote over there and, and build that. Um, that's just kind of something I'm trying to squeeze in and do. When I have free time, there's nobody out there really hired to build it, so. Uh, it's going down in the new, in the middle wing down by the cafeteria. There was a closet down there. Yeah, it used to actually be used for, uh. Been used for many things over the years. Um, so it'll be a lot where the server room is now there, the heat there, uh, condensate pumps, all steam dumps under the floor in that room. The floor is over two hundred degrees, so. It's pretty hard to keep the room cool when you got a two hundred degree floor under heat, you know?
We're in a big condition, this is.
Yeah. Yeah, we have, we've gone through a lot of air conditioner, so.
What's, what's being done in the new room for cooling?
The new room, um, we'll probably do it heat pump, um, which is. Close enough to the outside wall that we can do a heat pump and we'll, I have an indoor unit that we use in the winter. Um, so I think we should be pretty good. That way, plus the new, that whole new wing has better ventilation. Um, that we can tie into and actually exhaust the air out of that room, so. That is in progress and hopefully. Be done. Next, by next week at some point, as far as my end. Heating season, I think everyone asks, so, uh, Mother Nature's been, been good to us so far. Uh, we've only had one below zero day and, uh, you know, I looked the other day, uh. My memories popped up and it was eleven, twelve degrees below zero for several days in a row. Um, so we are actually several thousand gallons to the good this year, you know, that could all change tomorrow. But, uh, it's certainly been a, been a good year as far as heating goes. And a little bit of sad news, our cafeteria elevator has finally reached the end of its useful life. Gave us fifty, almost fifty years of service. Um, this is something we babied along for quite a few years. Fortunately, you know, it's something that we've talked about, talked about. Fortunately, you know, it's something that we've talked about, talked about and it's their expensive repairs and it's nothing we've ever. Been able to budget for, but fortunately through the S R money, um, we did get that approved. Um, and we're gonna be actually rebuilding both elevators. With that money, uh, with, with some of that money, which will bring them all up to today's standards and and. Sorely, sorely needed. Um, so. That is scheduled for federal vacation, provided the materials come in. They're still waiting on some parts to, to do that job, but uh. Fingers crossed it'll, it'll be here on time and we'll have that back in service.
And get another fifty years.
Yeah, I, I would be shocked, which is fifty years on the new one, but. And just the way new stuff goes.
Anybody have any questions?
If we save in many gallons, I'd say a minimum amount that we have to buy, so I just.
So we're contracted, so our, with our contract with every year, we have to stay within ten percent. Um, you know, it's always a game you play. Um, you gotta be within ten percent or you can be on the hook for the additional. Cost. Now, if fuel prices rise in the summer, they don't charge you the extra if we've got unburned gallons because it's money in their pocket, but if fuel drops. And we've been at a higher price than they can.
So you make a call in the summertime if it's low, you're gonna not use that.
Yep, it's, it's all a game you play. But we do have to be within that ten percent margin, so.
Anybody else got any questions?
Just that I, I know we had a building grounds meeting a couple, uh. Well, it seems like a long time ago. I know you've mentioned that and I just, I just really appreciated being aware of it before. Comes here. Thank you very much.
Business meeting.
Get ready.
All good.
Hi, everybody. So uh, the rewrite on the S R P grant has been completed. Uh, I actually heard back from the grant manager from the state today, Mooney Sullivan. Uh, some of the projects were approved. Others, they need more detail on it. It was to be expected. Uh, so I'm hoping to get that uh rewrite back into the state by the end of the week. Uh, we were able to utilize a new grant designed to expand access to computer sciences in the classroom. Uh, with this grant, we were able to purchase. Three different programs. Uh, and the invoices have already been submitted to the state. We're waiting um the check. Our second quarter financials have been reviewed and approved by Neo. Uh, the budget process for FY twenty four has commenced. And things are progressing in a timely manner according to our schedule. I've received a few budgets from departments already. I'm still waiting on a handful of them, but once I get them all in, uh, Dr. Lane and I will be sitting down to discuss. W twos and ten ninety nines have been generated on our family DNA reconcile, their distribution at the end of the month. And the audit for FY twenty two is still being worked on due to unforeseen circumstances at the audit firm. Uh, I've been in. Constant communication with the firm, uh, Dr. Lane, and I actually had a meeting with them earlier today. And it looks like things will be wrapping up here shortly. Okay, uh, if you take a look at our firm's financial health. Um. Just to keep things short. At this point in time, we are fifty seven point seven percent of the way through FY twenty three. And we have expended forty four point four percent of our budgets. So we're looking pretty good in that sense.
Will you, will you say what you just said one more time?
Sure. Uh, we are fifty seven point seven percent of the way through FY twenty three.
Thank you.
And we have expended forty four point four percent of our budget.
And I have a stupid question. Should know this, I guess. Anyo, I'm not sure what that is.
It's uh, state financial reporting.
Okay. I don't know if I've ever heard that.
Not entirely sure what it stands for myself, but I talk to them a lot.
I bet you do.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I'm quick. Oh, yes, sir. We, we have many problems, the other things. I know we had a big. Caving job is coming up. Is there any? Do we have any issues with not getting them approved by the town council?
A month ago, you changed that.
No, they were talking about.
Yeah, I ended up with um, uh, Mary Alice and Peter and we uh, kind of worked out a cash flow.
Okay.
So everything's good.
Thank you, Josh. I missed one. Oh, Joel Leaning, it's, I'm sorry.
Um, I am now fully certified safety care trainer. I'm one of two in the district. So. Yeah, we're gonna start rolling that out, um, figuring out who needs which level and working on our two crisis teams for both. One for here and Granite. I'm working with Dr. Lane, the principal, and so on, who should be on that team. Um, this, for December, we've had seventeen I E P, I E P meetings and Bible four meetings. Five, five, Bible four meetings out of that. Uh, three students have moved into the district in December. Uh, one came with the Bible four and two came with I E Ps. We've had one initially for services and four Bible board meetings that are resulted in referrals for additional services. So we're still getting a lot of those. That influx coming from people from the outside coming in and we're seeing student needs increase as well. Um, life skills room's been doing wonderful under Jennifer, under Jennifer John Drew. She's had them out in the community. They uh made a couple of field trips. They went and delivered some. Uh goodies to the fire department to thank them for working over uh the holiday season. They've. Uh, been to Granite to see a play and they have had some other outings. Uh, one that Miss T V is gonna talk about, that I put in my report as well. Um. Other than that, we're still looking for OT and uh speech. Those positions are still open. There's still a, my position is still open at Granite. And looking forward to next year, um, we've got fifteen coming in. Fifteen, seventeen coming over and we're almost at max capacity on caseloads here. So I know that we did some shifting here to help fill life skills, but we're still down a teacher here, this building as well. So Dr. Lane and I have been discussing and we're continuing to monitor numbers to kind of see where we might be able to. To shift some personnel or to make some cuts, and it's all gonna depend on numbers.
Is it need OT and B N E? What, what are we doing?
P T we're fine with, um, because we get those services from Dennis, uh, Mullin. OT, I have reached out to Dennis to see if they can provide additional uh services to us. So we're doing the best we can with what's available out there. Unfortunately, we're not the only school in the district. That is in that, in that situation. Speech, we're doing teletherapy. And um, because we've had an increase, we have Dottie Freo that is here for three day, two and a half to three days a week. And then um, teletherapy is picking up the other students. But we are now at the max of the contract that we have with them. So I'm having, I'm arranging a meeting this week to talk to them because we have uh more students that have been identified. And that we're going to have to get more services, so we're kind of. We're overflowing. And where we're at.
Uh, so all our teachers are within case loads required by the state?
Yes.
Special teachers.
We are getting to, to the limit.
And I know we're looking for an OT person. Are we, are we needing the I E Ps?
Right now we are, but if, if we keep getting referrals like we've been getting, um, I'd have to talk to Dennis. To see what he can do to get us more, or we may have to look at going tele, teletherapy for that. And I will tell you, teletherapy is very expensive.
So we didn't cut the position. Out of the budget here.
No.
So we still had that. We'll have to refill next year. If we have those kind of numbers come here.
Yes.
Okay.
Because.
So we just, we're switching and keeping, but the positions are still there.
Right, because if you look at last year, we had one full OT. Plus, we had Earl that was here three days a week. Right now, what we're only getting is basically six days between two therapists and just got notified that. One of those therapists got hired by Bangor. So Dennis is going to have to replace that person, has been interviewing. Uh, but I don't know if he's found that to replace her to be able to pick up that case load.
Okay, and we would still hire two special ed teachers if we can find them.
Yes, we can find them.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you. Well, you get new people through, they come with I E Ps to they just, to use their I E Ps and do a whole brand.
If we usually do is we look at them, some of them, their I E Ps are current and we have current evaluations. If their evaluations are within two years, we look at those and we say, yep, nothing's changed. Um, sometimes we might say, eh, we're not quite sure, so we'll order evaluations. And then we'll reconvene, but because they come with that I E P, we have to honor it for right now and sort of get really bells that say otherwise. I have been looking in our meetings, going over new evaluations and being very. Uh, aware and cognizant of, uh, can we move them to a Bible four plan, which is general, you know, special ed? Um, and we have dismissed a few students. Dismissed a few speech students, but we've had five more come in, so we're kind of fighting that battle on a daily basis.
Are we still around thirty percent?
We're probably thirty, maybe a little higher now.
That is a really good question too, because it, when we factor in the fact that um, we have students that recently have come from an online academic program. Or from homeschooling, so what they come in need is something that we need to assess. Or something that just doesn't line up with what a public, you know, brick and mortar school is. So that was a good question because we just barely had one of those come in, so. Makes consideration a little bit different. I think, have we had a board meeting since we had the training for the review?
No, uh, we, no, that was the December one when we.
Right, so we had a training from the um DOE as part of the review process with the SPED program. So Jolene and all of the, her um, like leadership team for SPED, Sped, and myself. Um, and Dottie Freehill, there were a bunch of us in this room with the training that was online. So the good thing about that is that they show you what percentage of each category. Um, what, how we're doing, so it's usually in blocks like forty percent, sixty percent, eighty percent. But the, the school system really did very well in a lot of areas. And a couple of places where they didn't, they were like a sixty or eighty percent, so that means they have to like fix. In the next time an annual comes due, they have to fix that small percentage of I E Ps before they send them down for a review. So that whole process should be done by September.
Yeah, I'm hoping by, by the first of October, because we have until the thirty first of October.
Okay.
To fix us and most of them, some of them were just minor fixes.
They were.
Um, and the way the state works, because they have to work underneath federal guidelines, is that. We could get, get ding the one very small thing and it automatically drops you to zero percent. It's either zero or a hundred.
Right.
There's no deviation in the middle. Um, so some of the things, it might have been a minor thing, but we got zero percent because it's an all or nothing item. And most of it was around uh functional goals was, was where it was, which are OT, speech. People that don't necessarily write goals all the time.
And sometimes it was language within those goals. So if you miss the word here and like section C. And then you go down and you're in section E and you've still got the wrong word, like wrong adjective, then you get dinged for that. So they helped us identify what some of those things are. Um, so it was, it's, it's, it's noteworthy because a special ed review is a big deal. It does relate to our services and success, certainly for our students, but it also relates to the amount of funding that we get. So she and her team are doing what they were, what's needed to do, which is to have those trainings and to. Do some of those follow-up pieces. So I just wanted to mention that as a, is kind of, it's very important.
I know one of the things that, that they pointed out to me, because we actually sat down with the auditors. And then got to go over our I E Ps one on one with them. And in one part, I had used a percentage, like sixty percent, the child is able to multiply. By one digit, sixty percent. But when I wrote the goal, I did it four out of five. So because I, even though four out of five is eighty percent, because I didn't use percentage in the bottom instead. That was something that, no, can't do that, has to match. I'm like, oh, okay.
So that's, so that's a great example. You see that really it isn't to the, um. To the detriment of the student, her percentage for the goal was actually higher, but it was inconsistent. So we got looked at for that. Yep, good example. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Instructional interventions. No, no, thanks. I get two at once, I did good.
Not the same to start. And the staff at Granite continue to amaze and call me. Um, today I had a third grader come up to me. I went into the room to ask a teacher a question and I had a third grader come up to me to show me their math paper and what they're working on in math. And my heart melted with this student. He had two math papers and he specifically wanted to show me because these kids know. Hey, I'm a math person. And so they just, he just wanted to show me his math paper and what the project he was working on and then. Um, it's. It is wonderful. Um, art. I have a whole page here of what the art department's done. They have, uh, they did window decorations in the town. I would, everyone have a chance to see them. And the thing was, is it wasn't just Granite Street students that worked on this pre-K to five, it was. Sterns as well that worked on these windows. And the Granite Street students were in awe of the high school students and was so excited to be able to do something with the high school. Um, the Granite Street students, the art department also, they designed and created cards and. Um, artwork for the Catawba Healthcare, where each resident of the nursing home received a card. Um, we kicked off the week before vacation with Spirit Week. Um, I, we did rich characters and favorite PJs in red and green and flannel and plaid. And ended the week with rich stained block parties and radio backs. Um. That week, the National Junior Honor Society visited the kindergarten class. The first grade class and the second grade class, and they delivered a. Wrapped book for every student in those three groups. And I walked into one of the classes as students were opening their books and they were just so excited to receive a book. And it was really fun to watch. Mr. Waits High School Chorus came and sang Christmas carols all through the halls at Granite. Uh, that was really exciting and before they left, the first graders sang their favorite song back to the high school students. Um, typing without tears is a new program that uh, this Lander has implemented in the computer class. And she says it's going really well and the kids are enjoying it and really learning how to place their hands on keyboard of the. Computer to type. Uh, Mrs. Sol's class performed How to Bridge Soul Christmas by Dr. Seuss to Mrs. John Brook's class from Sterns. Um. She tried several days to get here and things didn't work out with sickness and snowstorms and whatnot. They finally got over here and it, it was a big hit. And uh, Mr. Sol's class also helped the. One of the pre-K classes become gingerbread men, where it's laid on a big brown piece of paper and they trace the outline and. Help them create gingerbread men of their own body size. Um. The kids are. They're excited. They are exciting. And they just have a lot of love.
I did walk downtown. I don't, I don't know if we down there for a parade or not. I had Jacob with me, we walked in downtown. I said, show me where your decorations are and stuff. And. I'm a little older than some of the people in this room and I remember the painting. Always, the kids would always go down and paint on the, the windows and that's what I was. And that's what I was looking for, I wasn't looking for. The the snowflakes, the snowmen and stuff, they stuck. In the stores and behind the glass, I was looking for. Outside.
And there may have been more of the painting. But. She was only notified about two weeks before we were done for Christmas. We would, we would like you to do this, and so she went with what she could do. And that she had to pay the artwork in the classroom again. And then and then had them, what did I, uh she said they let her know like first to November. You could do something a little different, but it does have, it's very tiny.
We had, we had Newberry's building, we had all of those great big windows. To use.
That was a last minute thought. About doing that, and we called them and and she bent over backwards to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh we were very pleased to get it all, we. You know, that was my first part to us, they're gonna paint the windows, boy, they're gonna do that quick.
Yeah. Look into something different, so.
I thought it would be great. When I, when I, when I saw finally about what I was looking at, I I thought it was great. Thank you, Carla. Uh Mister Carla, as his report.
He's involved in ball tonight.
And the boys have won a couple of games, right?
The last two.
All right.
Does anybody have any questions about Mister Collins' report?
When will we be making the dedication uh Greenwood summer?
Summer.
Oh.
Yeah. The alumni is um they actually canceled their meeting for tomorrow. Um and they're putting it out until February and they're. They're gonna take the lead on making a plan in order to make that. An event, um which will be able to participate in.
Another town gives. Proclamations and stuff, maybe it's something we should do as a school board to recently. Huh?
We used to do that.
We used to do that, I should uh. Have something to.
Do you want you do it during your report, then it comes out like.
What's that?
What you asked, what what you sent a notice in your. Don't worry, I'll bring it up as a question. I know you did.
We actually talked about that, that was that was one of the topics at at the conference this year. Was about recognizing.
Yeah.
People in your community.
And we and we never did recognize the uh.
Yeah, we still need to do that.
To follow. All schools, Steve, anything.
No.
And the the music. Performing all the other music in that. All of all the things uh.
Forming us.
They had the uh.
The play arts.
Yeah.
They had a court. You know, the Mark Court.
Yeah.
Yeah, recognize it, I think.
Beth P V. First vegetable.
So I had on my report, um just a little bit of updates on the grants. The local entitlement grant has been approved. The S I, not be confused with the S R. Um grant has been granted substantial approval and we're starting preparation for next year. Kind of tagging that on to the stakeholders meetings that we've been, Josh has been holding with the S R grant. Just to start looking at some things to put in place when I do next year's application. Um we held our winter semi formal dance on Saturday for both middle school and high school, split the gym in half. It went really well, the kids seemed to have a great time. On Sydney. Yeah. Um we have some staff training um. For the early release day tomorrow where we're going over uh T P A for staff evaluation. There's also outdoor wilderness training for some of our staff um that. Teaches outdoor education. And also toward total prom trip so that those um those people involved, Anna Loom and Marco Stevens are already certified. Um Kyle Leathers, Marina As and Warren Moscone are in the process. So they would be able to do outdoor education, not only at the middle school level, we're hoping to expand that now into the high school level. And make that part of the high school curriculum. The certification, Tom, do you have a question? Cause you look puzzled.
No, I'm just. Uh trying to relate it to what, that would be something to like. Uh we had Mister uh Mister Gonya did it.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay. I was I was trying to put what the wilderness.
So that certification has um two separate pieces in order for them to be considered certified as an educational trip leader. And that includes wilderness first aid. And then the educational trip leader training. So it all has to do with safety outdoors, so when the kids go kayaking or hiking or toe pond and do those things. We have certified staff there working with them. Um and then. Mrs. Maynard cut her. Report a little bit short for me because I wanted to talk about um Mr. Andros Life Skills Room and their trip to the River Drivers. They actually went up there with a thank you card um and some homemade scones. Because um they had donated some furniture to the Life Skills Room, so they went up there to thank them. Then they also. Were given a tour and they learned about various jobs, um so they had a tour of the kitchen, they learned about housekeeping. Um maintenance, they even got to see some of the trail grooming. They were, they were really excited, and so then they worked on skills, they had lunch. Um so they worked on their skills, ordering from a menu, restaurant etiquette. Um so they had a really great town, I I attached some pictures to you guys to see and. I just thought that was important that you should know how much we're trying to connect with the community. Oh, yes, well, I believe.
Well.
I believe that the Alumni Association is going to, or maybe already has. Reached out to our Greenlaw to let him know about. Having the the field dedicators.
We go for it.
Yeah. So you don't want to vote to write that letter anymore?
No.
Yeah.
Although, you know, doing some sort of proclamation is entirely different, and I think that should be done, yes.
It's up to you to present.
No, my job is to just say. And I cause when when they presented mine, it wasn't the chairman. Of the town council that did it, it was somebody else.
Well, if you guys do your proclamation, I would be more than happy to get up there.
Maybe see me if you get it.
Yeah.
We need so much. So how do we, I don't, I don't know anything about these proclamations.
Just read it.
Yeah.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
You even get it, you just.
You you yourself, you get the information on the person and you write the proclamations, it's not that hard.
No, just. So it's like, it's we get to the fields, it's something like that.
Yeah.
It's showing that we recognize.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh speaking of the the um. Miss John Joe's class, they are looking for more opportunities to get out in the community. So if you have ideas or suggestions, Miss John Joe would gladly accept any opportunities. That are available.
You're not, no, you're not getting the cookies.
No.
We have a policy about stones, don't do that. No, yeah.
I'm I'm glad to see that. They're getting out in there enjoying the dance.
They had a great time.
Yeah.
Great time.
And they're learning proper etiquette. Which. Is not something even so about. Other students get. A great, great word. Anybody else got a comment? Now that kind of buried myself with the stones and.
Stone and stone knows its goals.
Oh, thanks.
All right, I'll bring up the end of all of these wonderful reports. Um the certification team um is doing a wonderful job looking at um promoting promoting professional responsibility. Mrs. Mooney has been guiding the process through with her team. Will be presenting some information in August, um Mrs. Wade and Mrs. R are moving forward with the tier three grant. Uh they've had some meetings and they're officially all set up in the system with um the state of Maine. So that work will be continuing, the district admin team. Uh is meeting every other Tuesday, we did not meet today because of the delay, but we do have a third uh uh. Survey that's ready to launch on Wednesday, um there is a chance that will be delayed by a day because the system that we have, we have. A little bit of a glitch on making sure we have everybody included, so that may be off a day. But the idea of the survey is to collect information from our parents, students and community. As we continue to work towards a five year strategic plan um for our school system. Um the strategic plan is really important. That we keep in mind that the goals that we set through that. Out looking out five years relates to our mission and that everything points towards that. Decisions we make on policies, decisions we make about the buildings, decisions we make about hiring. Programs that we support, money that we spend, everything points to that one thing. Um so that will become more and more um a focal point for everybody as we continue to move forward. Um the next district announcement um will come out, also that might be held up by a day as we take care of this glitch. But the point, if anybody's asking you, is just to celebrate our school. Tell the information that we're doing, let everybody know um. Kind of basically what they're getting for out of our system um on all kinds of aspects. Buildings and grants has met a couple of times, policy committees met a couple of times. We're getting a lot of things accomplished and according to some of the folks working on the committees, it's. Refreshing to 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 move um to move in a direction that's helpful, the technology committee is also getting ready to meet. Uh we've received our letter from the um association to begin negotiations, um that's an exciting thing. Because it is our opportunity to support professional development um of our instructors, of our programs, the people who run them. And hopefully an opportunity to find ways to invite people to work in our district. Um. I've been here about seventy nine days now and have seen a special ed. Review, a meal program review, a financial audit. And now, for the first time ever, lucky as we are, we have a McKenny, McKenny Vento um review. Um Katie D has been the coordinator for a number of years. And she's looked at this form and it's like, what is this? And I'm like, I don't know. Um I've been the Kenny Vento coordinator, we have never had a review, so I've reached out to all kinds of folks that I know. And this is new for everybody, the review process of this program is new, it's a federally um related program in order to distribute money. Um which. Is interesting because everybody else here is like, I don't know what to do with this, we don't do this, or we haven't done this, and we're all in the same boat. Every, everybody is in the same boat because we haven't had these requirements. So K D D is is taking a look at that and we will do just fine, we will do equally as well as everybody else in the state. And it's in three, three rounds, so round one, uh we were lucky enough to be part of. And if you think of, if the question is why are we lucky, it's because it's round one. So they don't know what they're gonna get, and what they're gonna get is a lot of people who don't, who do the program, we support homeless children, we support. Kid people in the community, we just don't have these formal paper trails like they're asking for. Round two, those people will be looked at like, well, you know what's going on, so you should have it be a little bit better. And those who will be in round three will be, oh, there's all kinds of people before you, so you should have this under your belt. So I think we're lucky we're in round one, um and that process is just starting right now. So if you hear people say, McKenny Vento, it is a program you've had in the system for a number of years, Katie's been monitoring over it. There hasn't been a lot of um paper trail with it, and thankfully, there hasn't been a lot of need for the funding. Um but now um some of that's um changing. Um I continue to have a lot of conversations with community and public organizations, all um looking to. To put out a positive and successful image, just want to remind everybody that my door, phone and email are open, contact me anytime. Uh I was invited to speak to the Alumni Association on tomorrow. And unfortunately, due to illness and scheduling, that meeting has been um canceled or or rescheduled. And so I wrote my little speech over the weekend and I just couldn't say nothing other than wonderful things about what I'm seeing going on here. So I see my role as your advocate for your system and your programs. And I actually felt kind of fortunate to have that invitation um to go speak to the alumni, so just kind of keeping that in mind. Thoughts or questions?
So are we still having trouble with the announcement? Well, I didn't get anything.
I got it this time.
I got it. No, I didn't.
Always get it.
And I didn't get any of it. I usually get it like three ways, I didn't get anything.
So, yes, we're still having trouble, so the program is with, it's connected to power. Well, it has a lot to do with current emails and phone numbers being updated in it. And Donna and Amanda and Tammy have like looked at all of our. Kids and all of our staff, but then there's this other group called what, Louis?
They're just additional contributors.
Yeah, and like for some reason, in the district announcement, that's blank. So Louis is going to look to see why that line is not populated. Um but he's got to talk with the factory directly and see what's happened, because if we did the announcement separate, pulled down Granite, pulled down Sterns, did everything separate. Then in the Sterns section, that's populated. In Granite and in district, it's not, so yes, it's a problem and we recognize it and we apologize for any issues it created for people. And I appreciate people letting me know if they didn't get it, because then I can make a list and Louis can see where the problem is, but. So, yeah. I know.
I did get it, yeah.
It doesn't make any sense. I think a couple of staff people.
That's good information.
But you text, I didn't get it in Sterns too, so like.
That's how I got to.
Yeah, that's what I got to.
Okay. So you've got the the message, the email and the text. So, yes, it's a problem and we're guessing it.
I just want, who the hell's calling me this time?
Well, I was expecting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other thoughts or questions?
Anything else? And I just, I appreciate you being select in the community, I think it's good PR for schools. And uh it can only benefit us in the future.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Lane, I think you're doing wonderful.
Very welcome, thank you.
But we still gotta review that contract.
I didn't get this.
February fourteenth and March fourteenth.
Yep.
I apologize to everybody on Zoom, if you do not. Come in and speak if you wanted to, hopefully. We'll figure out what's going on and add that pitch. For the next meeting. Uh motion to go into yet.
No. A motion to enter an executive session, show it to one M R S A. Four oh five, let's say six, let's say F, information in confidential records.
Second.
I did.
All in favor if we're going into a secondary session? Live vote. Thank you, everybody, for coming.